We'll go ahead and get started. I see that we're recording now and we'll go ahead and get started. This time, I'd like to welcome everybody to our work session tonight. And this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Putnam to introduce our speakers tonight and turn it over to you, Dr. Putnam.
Thank you, Chairman Francis, members of the board. Tonight, we have with us, we're very privileged to have Michael Miller with Numerics. If you remember, you approved contracting with him to evaluate the mill closure event and see what ramifications that might have, not only for us immediately, but 10 years down the road. And so, very pleased to introduce Michael Miller. I'll remind you, I bragged on him before. I told him preemptively, I said, I told, that I had told all of you. He's very accurate. He worked with the Pillatec closure. And I believe you were then 10 or 12 students of being spot on the money of how many students that would be lost due to the Pillatec closure. So, we've got an expert in the room. He's prepared a really in-depth and technical report, and we're pleased to have him here with us. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board members, good evening. It's my pleasure to be here. My name is Mike Miller. I have a small company in Charleston, South Carolina called Numerics. I've been at work for about seven years, almost eight years now. Before that, I spent 13 years at NC State heading the Operations Research and Education Lab, doing a lot of the same work that you're going to see tonight. So, I have a few years in these kinds of numbers. Tonight, we're going to go over the highlights of a written report that is in your packet. It's quite lengthy, detailed, a lot of numbers going on, a lot of background data for some of the things that we're going to be talking about tonight. So, if you need, get to sleep some night, pull that report out, and you're going to be gone. There is some, some good information in there, and I'll try to refer to it in the slides so you can make note of what to look for. We'll look at methodology and data, very short kind of overview of how this process works and the data behind it, especially focusing in on GIS analysis. There's a land use study component in this particular study that we'll look at as well. The, the large meat of this is the demographic impacts on the district from the mill closure. I'll explain how we arrived at some of those conclusions that you'll see tonight. Finally, we'll end with the membership forecast and a couple of closing comments. Methodology, typically, the work that I do involves basically two things. First is statistics, a lot of understanding how school kids move through their district, through their schools, through their districts, through their grades, looking at cohorts, how they grow, how they shrink, and how they advance through the school system. But the second part, which is appropriate here, is GIS analysis, geographic information systems. Basically, that's putting data together with maps. So, we're able to not only talk about a new subdivision in the central part of the county, but you're actually able to locate where that will be, which school lines it's inside, and how many students you may be able to expect from that. So, that's a big part of this one as well. And as I mentioned a little while ago, the, the unique part of this project was demographic analysis of trying to quantify the impact of the closing of the mill and how that's going to affect the enrollment over the next several years. Some of the background data that we use in every single project is resident live birth data. So, these are the live births of county residents. So, if they, the parents are residents of Haywood County, no matter if they're born in Knoxville, they're still listed as a resident of Haywood County. And as you can tell, it's been very flat since about 2018, 19. In fact, there's a decrease, when you look at the whole trend from 2014 to 2022, latest data, there is a decreasing trend of .7, 8% per year, but it is leveling out. It hasn't really fluctuated very much in the last four years. The reason we look at resident live birth data is in school forecasting, it gives us a pretty good measure of how the kindergartners are going to come into the system in five years. Doesn't mean it's the exact same with kids, but the numbers often correlate very strongly. Second big piece of, of school-related data is the average daily membership. What you see on this table is from 2018 to 2023. These are DPI month-two numbers. Generally speaking, that's what I center in on. They tend to be a little bit more stable. Often, they're slightly larger than month-one, depending on the county, of course. For Haywood County, between 2018 and 19, and 2023, 24, the average daily membership, ADM, has decreased by an average of 129, or about almost 2% per year. And I think you can notice from the bar graph, a big drop in 2020. We all kind of know where that's coming from. Virtually every county I work with has gone through similar experiences from COVID. Some are on the recovery, some, some are not. But the interesting thing about Haywood County is what happens afterwards. We're not seeing the kind of recoveries that you might see in other things. There are other factors involved, and one of them is the closing of the mill, of course. Throughout all the data, we're going to keep the pre-K count at its 2023 count, which is 86, I think, in about five schools, if I remember correctly. Let me say one more thing about this. In the report, there's a lengthy appendix. And one of the things in the appendix, if you're interested, is a US Census estimate of growth for all the counties in, in North Carolina. So, you can see how Haywood compares with some of the other counties in the vicinity. It's, it's very, it's very informative, I think. A critical piece of information, it turns out, I've started analyzing these several years ago, how I call them non-district school systems impact the, the district itself, the traditional district. The data that you're looking at here is charter schools furnished by DPI. Private and home schools, which are, is data furnished by the Department of Administration. You've got to go to a different place. It's not, it's not as granular as DPI data, but they do, they do give us a wholesale look at it. It's always a year back, too. So, the latest data we have for private and home is from 2022. Interesting thing, I'd like you to keep some numbers in mind. Since 2019, HCS has decreased in membership by 603 students, K-13 students. In that same time period, non-HCS schools have gained 662 students, not including the home and private in 2023. So, I, I will not say that there's a direct correlation, that you have a one-to-one correspondence between students leaving HSC and going to other, but it's bigger than a coincidence, let's put it that way. This is a phenomenon that we're seeing in, in several districts that I'm working with. And it's, now it's becoming a little easier to understand. We have more data. We can kind of tell what's going on with the trends. So, those two numbers aren't, aren't an accident. And I will jump into the GIS analysis part. Again, GIS is just putting data together with maps. So, if you point at a particular parcel, or a particular subdivision, or a particular multifamily complex, using our techniques now, we can tell how many schoolchildren reside there by their address, and which, which school they go to. Are they in district or out of district? We only can capture data about HCS students, not about other systems. That's, that's not within our legal purview. The main focus of a GIS analysis is a comprehensive identification and classification of residential developments. Are they single-family? Are they townhomes or condos? Are they apartments or multifamilies? There's mobile home parks that generate a lot of kids. There are individual mobile homes that are like single-family homes for all purposes. So, it's a matter of classifying those things, because each of those separate development types could possibly produce a different number of students. The second thing we do is, is to try to quantify the student impact from those residentials. So, if you take an arbitrary single-family subdivision of 50 units, how many students does it produce? If they're building a new one adjacent to it, or another phase, you can use that information to see how that new phase is going to impact your students, or impact your schools, I'm sorry. Currently, there are old, there are over 50,000 parcel records in Haywood County. But over 40% of those, something like 42 by my count, and this is verified by the county folks as well, are characterized as non-residential. They're either government land, or reserved land, parks, things like that. So, there won't be any students produced from that, or in, in some cases, industrial. If they are industrial, we categorize them as single-family, multifamily developments, including apartments, manufactured home, townhomes, apartments, condos, mobile home parks, things like that. So, we track these things. You can see the different colors here. Those stand for different developments or different phases of developments. So, sometimes, we don't know, they look like the same group of, of lots, but they're just different phases that have come out at different times. We look for three things. Number one, we look for how many district children are residing in there. Number two, we look for how many of those parcels are developed. And number three, how many, what's the total number of existing parcels or units? So, are there any vacant, vacant parcels? Is there any opportunity for these developments to grow further, to infill, so to speak? In your written report, there is a, I have an extensive table. I printed it out for, if I needed to refer to it here. It's on page 10 of your written report. We will not go through the details there. You can do that when you need to go to sleep. But the highlights here, generally speaking, in, in all districts, single-family residential are the big student producers. There are signs that that paradigm may be shifting in Haywood County. High interest rates, young families that, that don't want to be, the term is house poor. They'd rather be able to do things and not spend all their money on a mortgage and insurance and things like that. So, there are signs. I can recall the planner in Waynesville talking about, it's possible we're on the cusp of a paradigm shift in housing, which is, is a new thing for, for demographers like me. Because typically, in the past, single families, that's where you get your kids. Build 100 units there, sometimes you get, you know, half, sometimes even one child per unit, or per lot. There you got a whole bunch of kids. For Haywood County, the numbers are, are smaller. For the tract developments, meaning they have a name, and they're located, and I know what kind they are. The single-family student generation potential, which is the name I give to how many kids can be generated by an acre or by a unit, is between .25 students per developed acre or .32 per structure. So, if, the idea about structure is sometimes you'll, you'll get these planning, pending approvals that, that say there's a 50-lot subdivision that's going to be approved. .32 would say you're, you're looking at whatever .32 times 50 is for your students. I'm a mathematician, I should know that. So, that's how you connect these two pieces of information. And once again, there are other types of development, and they're all located on page 10 of the report, split apart into two types of analysis, developed acre and structure. I mentioned the unique component of, of this study is to try to determine the impact of the mill closing on the district. This is kind of a first time for me. I've been in a similar situation with another district, but not, not to the magnitude that I see in Haywood County. And the, the most appropriate way to approach this problem, we thought, was to take a survey of HCS staff, administration, staff, teachers, teachers assistants, principals, assistant principals, all the way through the grade, and get their ideas about two things. What's the likelihood of, what's the likely number of students that might be relocating from a given school? Each of these people were identified by what school they're currently working at. And then, secondly, how many staff or teachers you think might be impacted by the, the closure? And so, the survey was 480, almost 500 surveys, 480 valid surveys, and from, from the areas that you see here. So, a lot of teachers, 308 teachers. So, they're on the ground, boots on the ground. They know, interact with these kinds of, these families all the time. So, it's a, it's a powerful piece of, of data to have. What we will do with that data, I'll show you in just a moment, in the, in the forecast. To present the forecast, first, I'd like to talk about the assumptions, the background assumptions behind it. And then, this is, again, a unique project in that there are going to be two versions of, of the forecast. One, just doing it like I would always do it, using statistical methods, GIS, and trying to analyze the cohorts. I would call that a no-impact. That's version one. That's basically how you would do it if the mill was, the mill was never there. Okay? And in version two, that's informed by the findings from that staff survey, trying to quantify the impact by school over the next four or five years. As, as I said before, this is always built on month-two data. So, we looked at month-two data from 2018, 19 through 2023, 24. Again, version one includes only impacts from existing and anticipated developments. Version two is a quantification of the impacts from the staff survey. Typically, these forecasts are intended for, I would say, medium-to-long range planning. In, in situations where the, the populations are changing quickly and with, with large magnitude, this might help you figure out how to adjust lines to better balance utilization of schools. Or in some cases, maybe add some capacity if necessary. I do recommend that, as far as teacher allotment and things like that, there are much better sources of data to answer those questions closer to the time that you need them answered. The current counts that you have right now, at this time of the year, are probably better for next-year forecasts than the long-range forecasts that you're looking at tonight. The model that we're using is called the Numerics, it should be an X there, cohort feeder forecast model. It's particularly tuned to smaller districts with fairly clean feeder patterns, and that have geographically disparate areas, more urban and then more rural, for example. We did use the county live births data that you saw just a little while ago, and projecting that out at a very conservative rate of about 1% per year for the, the rest of the forecast. These multicolored stripes there, I don't know if you can tell the difference in the colors, but there's two red ones. Those stand for the two different versions of the forecast that you're looking at tonight. The rest of the stuff is like a spaghetti map. It's, there, you put all these models together, and, and when you, when you feel good, everything kind of lines up. You'll see some differences in there certainly, but the general trends are in line, as we see here. DPI might use a far simpler method of doing this, like 4-3-2-1 or something like that. But they're all fairly well-aligned. And I understand that these, these numbers, this is for illustration purposes. These are a separate handout, Excel sheet actually, in your package. There's two Excel pages. You'll be able to read the numbers off there. There's a version one and a version two. And I'll explain the colors. I'll let you digest the numbers on your own. I'll have some summary statistics in a moment. But these numbers represent how crowded a school is, both from 2018 through the current year and for 10 years in the future. So, if it's green, we are less than 60% of capacity. If it's yellow, we're in between 60 and 75% of capacity. If it's orange, you're in between 75 and 90% of capacity. And the red that you see is greater than 90% of capacity. So, there are some schools that are seeing some potential overcrowding issues here in the forecast that, in this version-one forecast. And if I, if I may, there's a, there's a paragraph in the written report. I did not reproduce it here. Capacities are sometimes hard to get a handle of. If you have 100 students in a school, they're not all broken up into evenly graded, or even grades, numbers for grades, right? They come in clumps. Sometimes, you have a small class. Sometimes, you have a small fifth-grade class matriculate, replaced by a very large kindergarten class, and you've got to rearrange all kinds of stuff. So, just understand that these numbers are a guideline. Generally, you can expect to see mobile units pop up, you know, in an elementary school before 95%. But just, they're just used as a, more of a long-term guideline. The next slide, this would be slide 15, I believe, is version two. And now, getting into the numbers, we'll talk about a summary in just a second. I'm going to toggle back and forth between these two. They're all lined up, so they should be, whoop, not that one. So, this is version one, and this is version two. Version two, in some schools, you'll be able to notice that the colors change from red to orange, or the colors change from orange to yellow. That's a decrease in the estimated number of kids for that year. It's gone down in version two. So, again, looking at those toggle, you can see the numbers changed, too, if you pay attention to the small print. Here's the summary numbers for the, for those of us that cannot see those tiny little numbers there. For version one, current year, we're looking at, for both versions actually, 6,557. In five years, in 2028, we're looking at a drop of about 300 kids in the first version, and a drop of about, what is that, 600 kids in the second version. That, the methodology I use assumes that any impacts from the mill are pretty much going to be, if they're in fact occurring, they're going to be over in five years. No question in my mind about that. And then, in 2033, it evens out again, so you're not seeing any impact from the mill. It's, it's, there is some positive growth actually in some of the schools after that point. But we're looking at a version-one total of 6,155, and a version-two total of 5839. So, most of the impact occurring in those first three or four years. Annually, the percentage rate is still decreasing as it is today. Version one has a decreasing rate close to what we're talking about today, .64. And version two increases by one, or decreases by 1.16% per year. Again, this is assuming that pre-K remains more or less the same at 86. Pre-K affects your capacity, as you know, if they pick up chairs, so it's important to keep those children in mind. Again, I'll mention the, the written report. A lot more information there, a lot more detail than I went through tonight. But I, I hope this kind of gives you a, a little bit of a primer in some of these things. There's a lot of numbers in there. And, but I hope they're a little bit easier to understand right now. I'd like to close with, we'll ask some, if there's any questions in a moment. But I would like to close with, with a couple of remarks. I don't usually do this. The numbers kind of do what they do, and I let them go, and everybody's happy. But this was a, a unique challenge for me because of the closure of the mill. And fundamentally, the challenge at its core is because this, this is about decisions families make on a very personal, personal level about relocation. You know, do, are we going to take our child out of school where they've been for maybe a year, maybe five years, maybe 10 years, and try to find another place to live? So, it's a very personal thing. And as mathematicians, you don't do so good in predicting what individuals are going to decide when it comes to matters like that. Having said that, having said that, we looked at a lot of numbers. We talked to planners in municipalities with great information, great positive information as well. Planners in the county were very helpful with their information about new developments and how, how they expect things are going to wash out when this is all done. So, there are plenty of, I believe, positive signs for the district and for the county as a whole. We're seeing residential developments to continue, and in some cases, increasing in number over the last couple of years. Permitting activity is ramping up in, in some of the jurisdictions as well. So, there are signs that development is, is occurring, and in fact, is increasing. The, the problem with that right now is, is interest rates, but we're starting to see a change in that as well. And I think the main thing as a numbers guy is, when I look at these numbers from 2018 to the current year, it seems to me like most of the declines, the worst part of the declines are probably past. That's not going to say it's not going to drop down a little bit more. But I think most of the impact is probably behind you. And for this reason, I would say that version one is probably closer to where I would pin it for me. But somewhere in between version one and version two, probably on the upper side of that. And, and the last thing, and this is very important. I heard it from all of the people that I talked to today, is the reputation of the district. It, it is no small matter for a family to try to relocate out of this district that has such a great reputation, has such great schools, and produces such wonderful graduates. So, I, it's a, it's a real thing. So, I think you and everybody can be proud of that, because it is a factor in this. I don't know how to measure that, but it is a factor in it. So, in closing, if you're interested, there's the data sources we used. The most comprehensive one I found about the mill economic impacts itself, you probably are familiar with this, was written last June by a, a local organization here. So, I would encourage you to read that if you've not read it already. It's got a lot of good information about received impacts economically. And with that, I'll, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
One question I'd like to...
Yes, sir.
First, on the GIS analysis, do you have it right now, what the color is actually, man?
Microphone is it on?
Sorry.
I'm guilty I didn't start the meeting with my microphone.
Okay. On your GIS analysis, on, it's on page four. I think it's your slide number eight.
Yes, sir.
Well, you had your color coordinated. Do you know, could you verify what the, how can you, which colors meant for what?
They either have a, a different name. I didn't want, I, I have to be careful about putting names, I mean, identifiable things. I didn't want, I have to be careful about putting names, I mean identifiable things, so I'm a little bit.
Whether it's industrial or, yeah.
These, these are all residential. See, these are the ones I look at as tracking. They have different names, and in some cases, I know there's one in this particular picture where there's a multifamily and a single family.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah, so there's different types and, and different phases of the same type as well. They may have different colors.
Okay. One other question. On your, on your survey, the staff survey, was that all staff including other personnel like your custodial cafeteria, maintenance?
Yes, counselors.
Okay, I'll just make sure.
Yes.
All, all employees of the Haywood County Schools.
And thanks for, for everybody for pulling those strings. That's, that's amazing.
Yeah, well, yeah, our staff has done a great job.
Well, and it is based on participation, but everybody had the opportunity, so. Got roughly 1,000 employees, so looks like we had just under 50% participation.
Thank you. Good job, thank you, sir.
It's like 100% of our assistant superintendents participate again. I just noticed that.
In, in your analysis, do you also look at employment in the, the county? Because it seems like that's been the biggest issue, is we've, we've lost these, you know, the Deco, Welco, now International Paper, or, you know, the Greenleaf or whatever it's called.
Yes.
Evergreen, yes.
We would look at some of those, some of those pieces of information. I couldn't connect the dots between that and the specific number of students like I could with a survey.
Okay.
So it's, it's an important point, and that's, when, when you run into that, you're, you have to somehow tweeze apart employees that don't have school kids and employees that do have school kids, which is a very simple thing, but the, the data doesn't fall that way.
Because I mean, I know we can build, you know, more residents for these people to move in, but if there's not, you know, employment, are we getting, you know, families coming in, or are we just getting, you know, retirees coming in at that point?
I think from the planners I talked to and the census data, we'll, we'll hold this up, the current trend, and it has been for the last several years, is older populations moving in.
Right.
But there are signs on the ground that, that may be somewhat reversing, that you, I heard some, some of the folks talk about transplants from Atlanta that, that want to work remotely in, in smaller houses in this wonderful environment. And so I, I think, and this is happening in other places too, where the housing costs are very expensive. And I, I think there's no, I can't stand here and say that that's a trend that's going to continue. There are encouraging signs that, that folks are thinking differently about how traditionally get a home.
All right, okay.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
You said that, and we, we saw this, you know, 2019 and '20 when the COVID thing hit, and we lost a lot of students going back, I guess, homeschooling looks like, and
Yes.
as well as private and charter increases. Was there a causal reason for that that you could see, or have you seen across the state, or?
It's, I have seen it across the state. In, in certain cases, I think this may be the third district I've worked with, the numbers lined up very, very well. We're losing this much, and, you know, the, the non-traditional schools are gaining this much. I worked with Johnston County in North Carolina, and it just, it was on track. Had a charter open up, and in two years, boop, boop, boop. That's, that's what, they had to go there because they're still growing. So yes, it, it does happen. There are efforts underway in many districts to try to attract those children back, because not, not all these non-traditional schools have, have the athletic programs, or the band, or extracurricular stuff. So it is a critical talking point these days among board members, is how do we get our kids back in our schools?
Yeah, and what was the cause for not coming back when we opened back up? I don't understand, you know, like, or I, I'm not saying I don't understand, but I just, I question why at that point in time, it's like, we're not ever going to go back. It just, it amazes me in, in my thought process, because we purposely opened our schools as quick as possible to get them back in front of a teacher in-person learning that we were allowed to by.
Yes.
State law. But I think, my personal opinion is we lost a lot of kids because we couldn't get them back as quick as I think we should have or would have liked to have had.
Yes. It is a common, the, the number of districts that are seeing a more robust recovery from those systems versus the number where it's kind of staying the same, treading water, is, is very wide. I mean, you have just a few schools that are really experiencing that, that reversal, and, and most of them that I'm working with are seeing the same situation you are, that, once they go to those non-traditional schools, they're going to stay there for a while. Why? Don't, I don't know. Again, I think a lot of those, especially the home and private school, it's, it's, it gets into the family personal decision.
Sure.
And, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know. That's a great question.
Any other questions, anybody? A lot of information, and I appreciate it. I've had a chance to look it over, and it's, a lot of detail and hard work went into it, I know. So thank you for the.
You're welcome.
Hard work, and.
My pleasure.
We'll continue to use it for planning, and it looks like we don't have a cliff coming.
No, I don't.
It's a slow, and we've already had a significant loss. It looks like we've maybe turned a corner from the usual offices we had.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's interesting. Yeah. That's interesting.
Just a final word of kudos to folks who have helped us with this. Our county has, this study, you know, had a cost associated with it, but at no cost to Haywood County Schools. So our county helped fund a portion, as well as Ed NC funded a portion. So that study and the valuable information we just gained cost us nothing, thanks to our county and Ed NC. We're grateful for that.
Thank you to all concerned. Thank you.
All right. Very good. At this time, I'll go through, Mr. Phillips and I will tag team this. I'll read the budget message for the coming year. I will say, man, it sure is good to have Bob Phillips. He's been around, done that, and he's just a, a good soul, and he's very calming, very knowledgeable, and very skilled at what he does. So from this new, relatively new superintendent, I'm very grateful, so.
It's a good time to ask for a raise.
It's in there. Is that, is it the budget, right?
It's, you helped build it, so. You have, should have this in your, in your packet. The mission of Haywood County Schools is to work passionately and productively to support student success. We believe passionate work and productive work result in student success, and no other school district should have better overall academic and extracurricular success. The mission components serve as guiding principles in budget development. Our primary focus points for 2425 budget are, one, to recruit, maintain, and support employees in their passionate and productive work; two, limit expansion items in the local current expense budget; and three, adjust the budget as needed to account for declining enrollment and associated issues with the Canton Mill closure. This document recommend, represents the recommended budget for Haywood County Schools for fiscal year 2425 for local current expense funds, capital outlay funds, and child nutrition funds. In compliance with statutory requirements of the School Budget and Fiscal Control Act, the anticipated revenues and the projected expenditures are equal, and the budget is organized to enable the Board of Education to control the fiscal management of the school system. Six separate funds make up the total budget. One, local current expense, or Fund Two. Two, local restricted funds, or Fund Eight. Three, capital outlay, or Fund Four. Four, child nutrition, or Fund Five. Five, state public school, or Fund One. And six, federal grants, or Fund Three. The local current expense budget provides for a broad spectrum of school system operating costs. These include but are not limited to supplies, repairs, utilities, contracted services, as well as instructional and support personnel. During the development of the local current expense budget, the following assumptions were used. 3% salary increase for personnel, 7.65% employer matching FICA, 26.5% employer matching retirement, and $8,098.08 annual cost for employer matched hospitalization. I want to stop there and clarify, the 3% salary increase is not something we chose. It was something that was legislated, although we do support salary increases. I just wanted to point that out. That was not a, a local option, that was a state option. The anticipated county per pupil appropriation rate is $2,509.86 for 6,487 Haywood County School students, plus 669 charter students. The number of students is based on the best average daily membership of students for the first or second month for the, of the 2324 school year. Anticipated revenues also include $345,000 in fines and forfeitures and $24,000 from ABC revenues. This brings the fiscal year 2425 total anticipated county revenue to $18,329,558.16. Fund balance allocation of $719,483.75 brings revenue to equal the estimated expense Local restricted funds are not permitted for use in the current expense budget. The anticipated local restricted funds are over $3 million. This number varies based on, upon, varies based upon grant receipts. These funds are reserved for use as set forth by grant or policy guidelines. Capital outlay budget funds cover maintenance, repair, and renovation projects, equipment needs, and capital safety and support efforts throughout the school system. The requested capital outlay budget is $1.250 million. The child nutrition funds support the operation of the school food services. The anticipated child nutrition budget is $5,360,780. State public school budget funds provide for a broad spectrum of school system operating costs. These include but are not limited to supplies, repairs, contracted services, as well as instructional and support personnel. The state public school fund is the largest fund source and is based on an ADM of 6,487 students. We have no preliminary planning budget data from the state. The current year allocation for state public funds is $51,643,873.12. Federal grant funds are restricted for use in federally regulated areas. These include but are not limited to Title I, Title II, and Title IV. Current year allocation in federal grant funds is $4,993,624.16. The overall purpose of budget development and expenditures is to support passionate work and productive work that contribute to student success. So. Okay. All right, so now we'll move through, and I'm going to take page one of the budget, and Bob will jump in, we'll alternate pages here. So you can, this is kind of a breakdown of that total budget that we just read through in, in the budget message. And the first item is OO1, classroom teachers. Teachers who were paid in ESER in the current year. Some are paid for band directors, and that's what you're seeing there in OO1. In OO2, central office administration. The director, finance officers, assistant finance officers, board pay, liability and property insurance, legal and audit fees. And I want to draw your attention to something that might look strange. If you look at contracted instructional substitutes, or item 313, the reason that was, shows an amount of $825 in 2324 and shows $600,000 in 2425, that's substitutes, and it was actually moved from a different category, which I'll touch on in the very next one. Okay? OO3, non-instructional support, directors, clerical positions, custodians, maintenance employees, subs, utilities, maintenance contracts, maintenance supplies, and repairs. And again, you'll see the reciprocal true in item 162, substitute teachers. We just paid it in the correct area. Does that make sense?
Yep.
That's why you're seeing those drastics, but everything else aligns. Any questions on that page? Okay, next page.
Hold on one second. I think he's got one.
The classroom teachers, OO1, is the jump of 600,000, is that because of all the 3% and everything else that you was talking about, or am I not being able to look? That's something right here, let's see.
We actually had two raises. There was 4%, it's a total of 7% over the biennium that was legislated by the General Assembly for certified staff. And so just a reminder, these are locally paid teachers, what we pay out of local.
And in 2324, we paid some locals with ESER money.
Correct.
Oh, it's all coming back. That's the reason, yeah. So that's, that's, that's where the jump is. It was ESER money, now all of a sudden, we're having to pay it back out, right? Okay.
Yes.
And that is because of the 3% or some of the other raises. So yeah, we're just putting it back into where it's supposed to go.
Part of getting the ESER money was we had to continue that once that money ran out, correct? For some of those positions that we added with ESER money, we had to.
Actually, technically, what it was, the reason we did it that way, we never created positions with ESER money. Dr. Nolte and yourselves were all very wise never to go down that rabbit hole because that was money that was set to expire. The reason teachers were ever placed in that budget code pot of money in the first place was to help our depleting fund balance. We kept the same number of teachers, we simply moved them over to ESER funds to help pay for those for a year, and that strategy worked. Our, our fund balance was estimated to end last year at $675,000 roughly. It, it closed at 1.5, a little over 1.5 million. So same number of teachers, paid out of an expiring funding source, which was ESER, and that was realized in our local budget, in a $900,000 gain in fund balance.
Got you. Looking over here to make sure he's not getting his ruler at.
Can I ask a question about the instructional facilitator? We didn't have it in the budget, but it's proposed, $113,000 under the 001 classroom, under the teachers. It's.
Code 135.
Again, that might have been one of those items that were paid out of ESER.
Yeah, it could have been paid out of ESER last year, and next year, we won't have ESER money.
What is an instructional facilitator? Whose position would that be?
We have. We have several coaches throughout the district, and it could have been any one of those, but those are, they actually push in to facilitate, um, learning and pedagogy. And we have one for, um, or we did have one for English Language Arts, and then we had one for math, and those support and help our elementaries and middle schools.
That covers multiple, that covers multiple people, I think, Jill.
Yeah. I'd say that some of that was like Dr. Putnam saying, and we were paying them out of ESER, for example, Knox Harden, um, and those, those contracted services that you wouldn't show up here.
Okay.
Whether we'll continue those, those are always up for renewal at the end of the year.
Need your microphone. You need to start over again.
I don't want.
Hey. This is kind of cool.
Say again, please.
But I would say that it's those positions, those coaches that we had hired, and they, we paid, for example, Knox was an example. She worked with our secondary schools, and we paid her contract through ESER one time, and several other coaches, we paid them out of ESER, so that helped. And, and those we'll negotiate at the end. Those were previously paid positions out of schools remediation money, out of some of our local money matched with that. That's why it looks like it's new, but it's been there, but, and then again, another ESER. That's a great question. Okay, thank you.
So are you thinking that the, the substitutes that we'll be paying the?
E-S-S.
E-S-S, six hundred thousand this year? Is that what you're?
That, that's what we're anticipating, but now, in that is the real anticipated cost of a substitute. You would have a real cost associated with substitutes, and as we've talked in finance on occasion, there's approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in markup total for the year.
But all that's not profit for them, they have to pay their FICA.
That's correct. They're paying retirement benefits and FICA. They're also the platform that substitutes or teachers use to book a substitute. That's also included in that price. And then also they, you know, they have rewards and compensation for people who go and fill hard-to-staff positions or late-to-fill positions. So there's a lot included in that markup, but that six hundred thousand includes the actual cost of substitutes that we pay a daily rate to.
Okay. Any other questions on page one? Page two?
Okay, page two, uh, school building administration, assistant principals, AP and principal extra duty stipends, and school allocations. We give allocations for office operation. Instructional support, lead teachers, guidance, and school nurse. The school nurse costs us about a hundred thousand a year. Non-contributory employee benefits, longevity, annual leave payout, workers' comp, and career ed, that's CTE, supplies and other needs. Teacher assistance, TA subs. Thirty-two is exec, exceptional children, that's EC support. We budget all that supplies, and then they choose how they're going to use it. And academically gifted is AIG support. Any questions on that page?
So on number one ninety-two, the extra duty stipend, is that, is that the money that pays principals when they meet their expected growth or exceed growth? Is that, um, number one ninety-two, it says extra duty stipend?
I think that's when some of the APs, um, also manage the, manage the athletics, manage the ball field or something. I'm not really sure. Are you?
Several years ago, uh, the school system moved to an extra duty stipend because it was easier to do that, but it's basically a stipend paid for mileage that would be put on administrators' cars, going to ball games for gas, uh, for extra duties beyond the, the normal instructional day, but those extra duty stipends are paid to administrators.
That was CTE under that category, so I'm thinking it was also for some of their employees that they got their greenhouse extra duties over and beyond the normal school activities.
That, that is also in there as well, and you've got, um, yeah, I'll stop there.
That covers all the schools, all of, that's for, so extra duty stipend, that's for, that covers every school.
Yeah.
Okay, so for, for CTE, CTE.
Okay, so for CTE programs, I'm learning, okay? So, um, I'm, I'm thinking this is right. So we have, um, that money because that is a career tech ed code. I thought, I thought y'all were under O-fourteen, one ninety-two.
One ninety-two is what she's talking about.
Marla, I thought you said one ninety-two.
It is.
It is one ninety-two under O-O-Five, sorry.
It's under both, yes.
It's under school building administration. Never mind, Marla.
There's only six thousand for CTE, and there's a hundred and sixty-three thousand for the other.
Yeah, for school building administration, it's a hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's an extra duty stipend paid to principals, assistant principals, so forth and so on.
Yeah, that's what she was.
That is for school building administrators. It's a stipend paid to them.
So how do they usually get that? Do they usually get that, like, throughout the year when they're doing it, their monthly paycheck, they figure out they went to three different ballgames? But just an example, three different ballgames in one month, do they get paid monthly, or is it like a rolling year, they just get like a bonus at the year? Or is it a set stipend?
It, it is a set stipend, yes.
Which is two, three, whatever it is, yeah.
Yes.
So that's.
And they can get it in.
We have determined that O-O-Five, school building administrators, extra duty stipend, will be the principals, assistant principals, and then the career tech ed, O-fourteen, which is six thousand, is probably just the career, I mean, ag teacher, so on, so on, some of those, some of those. So anytime you see that, you just have to see what it's under to figure out exactly which person is getting the stipend.
Correct.
And it, it does vary from high school, middle school, and elementary, correct? Because elementary doesn't have so much to go to, so they don't have the responsibility necessarily as the high school and middle school.
That is correct. High school APs and principals would make far more than middle school APs and principals, a, as would middle school APs and principals make more than elementary APs or principals. It is staggered.
Divided out equally, or they turn it in and get reimbursed? Or it's just automatic stipend that they get?
It's an automatic stipend. Um, you know, if you choose to renew their contract and they're eligible, then we make that payment.
Like the CTE, I think, uh, like, they have to go water the greenhouses, they have to go take care of the greenhouses on the weekends and on, during the spring break and things like that.
Absolutely, yes.
Yep.
Hers is not set, the CTE, they turn in mileage reports that, once a month. They turn in mileage for the CTE program, so that is not a set stipend they get. That is, um, that money's there so we can reimburse them, and they turn that in monthly for their travel to and from the greenhouse. So they just automatically get this stipend in their paycheck? That's what you're saying? Like they, in the principals, assistant principals, they just automatically get this money, no matter how many games they go to or the extra they do? It's just an automatic?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like to see more of a breakdown of that later, about, like, how much that is per principal and assistant principal, and how it's kind of allocated, but that's for later. I, I'm just curious about that.
I agree with Marla on that, too. I'd like to see more of a breakdown.
And how they can use it, I mean, it's in their paycheck, so they use it however they want to. It's not for the school, it's for them personally.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
We had to, just a little history there as well. Several years ago, I wasn't the superintendent, but, um, that extra duty supplement got out of, out of balance with Buncombe and Jackson and other places, and we were losing administrator after administrator to Buncombe, uh, and it had to be increased, uh, to be able to be competitive and hold in our county the administrators we had. And so it was adjusted at that time, um, to reflect the market that they work in. So i- it's not something unique to, I guess what I'm saying is, it's not something unique to Haywood County. Every district and school system throughout this state has an extra duty stipend that they pay to administrators.
For our teachers now, when they do extra duties, but they're getting, I've been seeing, we've been approving, they're getting paid now in the evenings if they do extra duties?
Uh, if they tutor or agree to do, um, you know, EOG.
Do things for athletics, they get paid for that?
Uh, they do not. Well, not at the elementary. I guess it depends on the type of activity. If, if they're running a score clock, yes. Uh, if they're collecting at the gate, yes, um, for those types of activities. What I was, I went academic, like, if they have to work after school to tutor kids and what have you, we pay them to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
While we're on that, and I know, I mean, it's still budget question, but now that you said they get paid, and thank you for asking that, for extra stuff, like, if a teacher has to stay over to have a meeting with the principal, or it's a, I don't know what, a, a career day, let's just say a career day, and the principal's saying, okay, I need first graders to, teachers to stay over, we need to talk about this, and it takes two hours or three hours. Do they get paid for that?
Uh, they do not.
Now, why wouldn't they get paid for that?
Uh, their salary.
Yeah, I bet it's a salary, but their salary is, they're scheduled, I don't know, their schedule is seven-thirty to three-thirty, is what I've always understood. So if their stay and pace is three-thirty, why would we not pay, I know their salary, but their salary is a little different than your salary. When I say that, you're the superintendent. Why would we require teachers to do something after a certain amount and not expect to get something out of it? And that's something that I've sort of questioned, but.
I think that'd be a, a state level question.
Well, and that's what I, I, I guess that's what I'm wondering is, I mean, because, I mean, I've had teachers say, well, the principal said I had to be there for this meeting, and it lasted until eight o'clock at night.
I think a lot of salaried people, not only in the school system, you know, say I'm a salaried employee, and I might not go answer the phone from a customer on a weekend, that sort of thing. There's certain expected things above and beyond just the eight-to-five stuff, and I don't think, as long as we're not abusing it.
Right. Yeah.
I'm not saying.
So, when you think about the extra duty stipend, think about what we would pay for administrators in mileage. So you're, you're talking about after-school stuff at the school. They're not going to have to travel, we're not going to have, have a need to reimburse them for mileage. I'm not saying it's, you know, not hard work and not noticed, um, but it's also, as Chairman Francis pointed out, availability on weekends and nights and, um, being on call, I guess what is the best way to say it, being on call twenty-four, seven.
Yeah. One, one question I've got, when you mentioned that about driving time, Sarah, like, say you have a teacher that has to go to a conference, they need to go to a conference in Greensboro. They take their personal vehicle, they drive to Greensboro, they come back, they said they don't get any compensation for gas or mileage or anything. Should they get, should they be compensated if the school requires them to go to a conference?
Yeah.
They should get reimbursed.
Yeah.
Yes. We pay for mileage, yes.
I thought something, I just had a question. We'll discuss that later.
Very good.
Oh, yeah, one other question, too. Instructional support, uh, the one thirty-one, is that a new position, or is that again from ESER funds, previously being paid through ESER funds? What's the program code? It's, uh, zero-zero-seven, instructional support.
One thirty-one.
One thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Supports at regular take, is that? Yeah, that's regular teachers. Again, that was maybe something that had been paid out of ESER previously. That's correct. Thank you. You'll see, um, you know, just kind of as a disclaimer, by all means, please stop us, stop us and ask questions. You'll see some irregularities like that. And I'll just go ahead at this point in time, Bob, and just tell them, you know, kind of how we, we come, come at budget development. The last year we have that had any normalcy to it was twenty-two, twenty-three. But even in twenty-two, twenty-three.
It is.
We had not yet experienced pay increases, and so we had to account for having the same number of positions that looked most stable, uh, plus that seven percent increase, and that's how we arrived at the, the final number in developing the budget. Because this year, you had something like thirty-one positions being paid out of ESER, but that should have occurred so that we could build fund balance and be more solvent in fund balance. So there are all these irregularities in last year's budget, and that's why you see numbers where it's like zero, and then it goes, jumps up to a hundred and sixty-three thousand.
You know, what, what I did was, I took the twenty-two, twenty-three, and I factored in the seven percent over the two years, and then we had, uh, reductions. We reduced some custodians, we reduced some lead teachers, and I tried to factor all that in. So that's why some things looked funky. Uh, we paid them in twenty-two, twenty-three, and then I tried to base the twenty-four, twenty-five budget based on that, when we had people where we thought they should be. And then the, the current year's budget, twenty-three, twenty-four, has all the ESER changes. So it made it really difficult trying to come up with, uh, what we thought should be the budget. Uh, I think the budget that we developed is, uh, is reasonable. We got, we have some fund balance allocated, um, but I don't think we'll end up using any of it because of, we're going to have some ESER money left over, we don't know how much, there's so many unknown factors. I wanted that, um, fund balance allocation just as a safety cushion, and I don't think we'll use any of it. But we can't budget on what we don't know.
What we hope, it's got to be based on projections. Very good.
All right. We ready to continue?
Yes.
All right. Um, moving to page three, looking at O-thirty-six charter schools. And that payout, so that actually comes to us or goes to the county, and then the county distributes from there. Then we have English Language Learners, O-five-four, that's our ESL teachers. And then we have O-five-six, that's our yellow buses. And then we have O-six-one, uh, that's for supplies. And we have O-sixty-nine, that's our at-risk student services, SRO phones and supplies is what's paid out of that. O-seventy-two is middle school remediation. Uh, three-oh-one, that's for our junior ROTC program. You'll see an anomaly there. We were paying a substitute, uh, because we didn't have an ROTC teacher, but now this year, we have ROTC teacher, or the coming year, we will have an ROTC teacher that that we're going to have to pay for, for the full year. And Mr. Henson, back to your point, you were asking about that 600,000 amount. Well, that one's heavy over there, because this one was zeroed out, because we were paying for a sub. So you see how it swaps in and out of budget codes, depending on what the situation is. All right. And then ineligible local transportation. This is supplies, repairs, fuel for activity buses, and other non-yellow vehicles. And we have 800 Safe Schools, this is Blackboard Connect and Random Drug Screen. And then 802 Athletic Coaching Supplement, Supplements and Pay for Coaches.
On 056, 423 Fuel, how did that, is that ESER, again, that 75,000 fueled down to 4,000?
I think we hit all well.
I know, right? Be honest.
Which one?
Transportation of Pupils 423.
Well, we had quite a bit budget, we didn't use it, so I cut the budget.
Fair enough.
If you don't use it, you lose it.
Like that.
And Dr. Putnam, and it may not have been you, remind us again about the, the little transportation vehicle, it stays at Jonathan Valley, is that still correct? Little Ford Flex or whatever?
The Ford Flex, so.
There was something mentioned about it in the past month or two, I can't remember what that was.
Yeah, that was purchased when state law did not allow a yellow bus to cross state lines. And so we had to purchase that vehicle so we could comply with the law, but yet still be able to pick up all of our kids. And there's one in particular, one area that that, we had to cross, there's no other way to get to our kids in Haywood than to cross the state line.
Mount Sterling.
At Mount Sterling. So we purchased the vehicle, and then through the work of the legislature, they changed the law to allow the yellow buses to go across the line, but we still had the vehicle, so.
Is it still staying at Jonathan Valley?
No, it stays at our bus garage. And staff use it to go on trips. So back to your point, if, you know, if one is available, they can certainly use that vehicle.
Perfect.
And Mr. Nesbit, that was at Jonathan Valley for a while, in case they needed it to pick up students when the.
Bridge was, that's what I was thinking.
Yes.
I couldn't remember, I knew there was something, I couldn't remember there.
Yeah, we had it on standby there, just in case.
Back to the fuel thing, if it, if fuel prices skyrocket, we'll need more money in the budget.
They go back up.
And we'd take that from the, from the allocation.
There we go.
We left it in activity buses, but we took it away from the yellow buses.
On the yellow buses, do we get reimbursed on any of that money?
Yes.
Is that one, another reason why we pulled this, because we, that's something we do get reimbursed on?
That is correct.
So on, on 802 Athletic Coaching Supplement, under that 311 Contract Services, we had 74,000, and then we're, we're cutting that? What, what is?
We, we are not cutting that. What happened is IRS tax law changed, and we could no longer, they weren't eligible to contract services. So now that cost is in employee services, because we had to make them all employees, otherwise they wouldn't be eligible for a W9.
Exactly, okay. Just move to a different.
W2, excuse me, I'll get it right here in a minute.
Bracket, okay.
There's a lot, a- as you can tell, this was a very difficult budget. That's why I'm so happy to have Mr. Phillips. So there has been a lot of moving around.
Anything else on that page? Okay, the next page, ban in cultural arts supplement, high school remediation, those are self-explanatory. System instructional support, that's, I'm not, I'm not sure what that is. Do you know what that is?
Which one?
System instructional support. Curriculum support.
Yeah, this is where we have workshops, or we have to purchase materials, those types of things. I'll give you an example, letters training, you know. There are materials needed with letters, there are workshops to be attended, but.
I don't know exactly, Bob, what, if you could tell me what that 411, help me.
Computer Systems Support is ITC Positions, Media and Library. Curriculum Development, Employee Supplement, that's about three and a half million dollars. Community and Public Relations, advertising and membership dues, employee celebration, recognition, that's end of the year employee recognition and HR expenses. The SRO, and the ISGA Baseball Field Lease. And then we have, in ten years to the year, unbundled funds, $9,000, just.
Just in case.
In case of an emergency. Any questions on that page?
SRO officers, 827, so we are still paying 130,000, then they're picking up the rest. So that, that was taken in what?
Five. That's correct. We, we had one at Kent, we had every secondary school covered, and we've had those covered for some time, and we actually received the money for those officers. And so we, we didn't, we didn't change that. When the new officers come onboard, through talks with the county and the sheriff, it's like, y'all keep that as part of your budget, budget, to send the money there, through the sheriff's office, and let him manage that and provide those officers.
So that is still going for school resource officers, straight to the sheriff?
Correct. And Waynesville PD. And Canton.
And. Right, I mean, 130,000 ain't nowhere near what we're getting, I mean, to pay for what we're getting, so. Once again, I think we've.
Sometimes we have state 069 funds that we pay SROs out. It just depends on what kind of allocation we get from the state.
So on 813 Employee Supplement, that's the teacher's supplement, is that correct?
That's every employee.
That's every employee. And we are increasing it, which is good, I see that. Is that because we want to, or we have to?
Well, it's, it's a percentage. It's a percentage that we pay of everybody's yearly pay. And every time the General Assembly decides to give a raise, that's going to increase the amount of payout for that percentage. And, and again, we're, we're tickled about that, but, you know.
There's a cost.
There's a cost associated with.
Obviously.
It's, it's local.
Okay, thank you.
I think I calculated the, the cost of the increase from 2023 to 2025 was close to a million dollars. The salaries, the FICA, hospitalization, and the retirement was close to a million dollars.
They deserve it.
All right. All right, if no other questions on page four, I'll move to page five. You can see that we will have, in '23, '24, we had a county appropriation of 17,363,085. And for the proposed '24, '25 budget, we will have a county appropriation of 17,960,558.16. In '23, '24, our fines and forfeitures were 345,000, and we're anticipating those staying the same in '24, '25. And then you have ABC revenues, again, holding the same from '23 to '24, $24,000, and again in '24, '25. And when you match revenues with the proposed budget, a need of 719,483.75 is needed from fund balance. And I will echo what Mr. Phillips said, the goal is not to use that at all. We hope that's not needed. But if you've seen all the items swapping in and out of codes, and not realizing or feeling the full effects of paying for some of these positions out of local because we had ESER money. And in the interim, there's been a 4% increase last year, and another 3% on the way. You probably need a safety net there in this first year, but that fund balance amount needed could be much higher, had we not preemptively made staffing reductions last year. Be a lot higher.
The article that you shared with us from another school district, and I won't say who it was, but they were way upside down. And I think a lot of the school systems that did not take action are really feeling the burn right now.
Yeah, we are not alone in budget woes, but again, with y'all's help and leadership and guidance, and folks like Mr. Phillips and, and Taylor, we, we should be in a, in a good place.
Okay, the next page is the same budget, just shown a different way, Program Report Codes. I won't read through all these, but if you have any questions about any of them, we'll try to give you an answer.
I do have a question. You know, we're, we're sending, you know, 1.6, almost 1.7 million dollars to charter schools. How much does a teacher, on average, cost us? In other words, how many positions could we fill with that 1.6 in our system?
Well, it depends on years of experience, and what their county supplement that we pay them. But as a good general average, they could have more, they could be paid more, or they could be paid less. Considering insurance benefits, all that, the average for teaching, for teachers is about 65,000.
I just meant I'll tell you.
Are charter schools required to pay their teachers the same amount as our public school teachers make?
About 25. There are no restrictions.
They have no guidelines on what they pay their.
They can pay more or less.
And you've got to remember, they don't, unless they've changed, they don't have to be certified.
Correct.
A teacher as charter school can be whoever they want. So they're not even, I'm assuming that they would at least get somebody that has an education, but.
Even though it's taxpayers' money, they don't have to tell you.
So that's basically.
Even though our budget is public.
Sending to them.
They don't tell you nothing.
Correct.
Yeah, so all you're doing is you're turning over 1.6 million and saying, here, just do with it what you want.
By the way, we don't have a say so on that. Just to make that clear. We just didn't randomly decide we're going to do that. We should just fund it too, give it to them, and leave us out of it. It's what I've always said from day one. Just leave us out of it. Anyway, carry on.
Okay, on the next page, same information, just in a different format. It's by purpose, and the 5,000 series is instructional services. The 6,000 series is system-wide support. That's like your maintenance, your ITC, and all the central office departments, like finance and so forth. Ancillary services is, we support nutrition a little bit with repairs and so forth. And then non-program charges, the bulk of that is the payments to charter schools. And you can see that 49% of the budget goes to instructional services, and 42% goes to system-wide support, and less than 1% ancillary, and 9% to non-program, which is basically charter school. So we're giving charter schools 9% of our budget. And then, again, same information, just shown a different way. The object code, 100 object code is salaries, 200 object code is benefits, 300 is purchase services, 400 is supplies and materials, 500 is capital outlay, and 700 is transfers. And you can see that salaries is. 41%. 41%. Benefits, 20%. Purchase services, 20%. Supplies and materials, 10%. And capital outlay is less than 1, and transfers, charter schools, 9%.
And the reason you would have that is capital outlays, it's a separate budget.
Budget, okay.
This is current expense, local dollars used for current expense.
Any questions on that?
Ready for capital outlay?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Haynes?
Thank you, Mr. Phillips and Trevor, for the, Dr. Putnam, for the explanation there. Good questions, by the way.
Yes.
Real good.
All right. For the proposed capital budget, before we go through it line by line, I just wanted to kind of refresh everybody's memory. So prior to this current year that we're in, our proposed capital budget ask had been $900,000. And that covered, you know, the, the things that we needed to do at the schools to keep them, you know, up to date, maintained, heating, roofs, all that type of stuff. Last year, and so last year in planning, and in this current year, in order to take some, or to relieve the local current expense a little bit, which had been paying for the student device replacement, we decided to do an additional $350,000 ask, which is while we're at that $1,250,000 mark, and add in the student device replacement cycle, which is a yearly replacement cycle for all of our Chromebooks and iPads and things that our students use, to make it, you know, our schools one-to-one. But that's the reason, just to kind of refresh you, that we jumped from 900,000 ask to a $1,250,000 ask. So again, this year, we're at $1,250,000 total for the ask, and I'll just walk through it line by line. So first off, Canton Middle, the, we would like to change the oil boiler heat system to a propane heat system. That's in B building, and that change will just make it more fuel efficient, more cost efficient, and decrease the maintenance that's needed on that system, moving it to propane from oil, for a projected cost of $90,000. At Clyde Elementary, we'd like to do an upgrade to the fire alarm system. There's nothing wrong with the current system, it is just an older system. And as parts break on it, and we get those parts repaired, it's becoming harder and harder to find those parts, because it's an older system. And we've got two or three schools that are, you know, in that boat and getting close to having older systems, and so we're just trying to hit it off now and go ahead and start repairing those. So Clyde is the, the first one of those we want to do this year, and that's $105,000 on that cost. Our maintenance department needs a new plumbing truck. The current one that they had went out this year, the engine went kaput on it, and we couldn't fix it, so our maintenance director had kind of buddied up with the plumber, and they've been sharing his vehicle and going around and taking care of stuff. But it'll just make us more efficient and make everything roll better if we can get a plumbing truck like we need to have. And so we've budgeted and estimated about 80,000 for that. Also, just kind of system-wide, for our maintenance department, just some spare barred units. And we order a few of those every year, just to have them on hand in case they break somewhere, so we can just get one there quickly and replace them. We ordered some last year as well. And so we've got $20,000 allocated for that. The old HCL. The old HCLC building, which is Haywood Community Learning Center, that building is at the old Hazelwood Elementary. It's one of the buildings that, or one of the parts of that building that we still have. And we'd like to do a roof replacement there for an estimated cost of sixty thousand. That roof replacement was actually allocated in the capital budget, I believe, a couple years back. But because the students of HCLC moved to their new location at Central Haywood High School, that was put on hold because no one was in there. And we do have people in there now, releasing that building, and so we do need to replace that roof. It's got some leaks in it, and we need to, like I said, update that roof. As far as paving goes this year, we've got Tuscola and Pisgah on the paving. Rotation, again, there's still things there that need to be paved. And in your folder behind this capital sheet, there's two different maps. The first one shows Pisgah, and the second one is Tuscola. And the blue highlighted area is what is being proposed to being paved. So at Tus, or excuse me, at Pisgah first, it is their tennis court. I'm not sure when the last time the tennis court's been paved. It was probably prior to when the town of Canton gave the tennis court to the school system. But as you can see in that, even that aerial picture there, there are some pretty substantial cracks in that tennis court that have been patched, and we've done the best we can for a while with it, but it's time to get that thing paved. And then at Tuscola, on that next sheet, we'd like to pave the top drive lane and the top of the student parking, which also serves as teacher parking, visitor parking, and the pickup line for car riders. And then also, along with that being paved, there would be curbing all around that center grass kind of strip island that separates those two spots. And that's really needed because there's a lot of runoff that happens there, and as you walk by it, you can look and see over the years, all the rain that's washed that out. So we don't want to curb that up, make it look really nice, have the water flow the way it should, and then really spruce that area in between up as far as that goes. So that's our two proposed pavings this year for three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. At Riverbend Elementary, next in line there, we'd like to replace the chiller. Currently, it's a dual chiller system, so it's got two compressors, one of which is not working at all, and the other one, we're limping it along by using parts from the one that doesn't work to repair, to repair that one. So it is on its last leg, and we'd like to get that chiller replaced. So we've got that estimated at two hundred thousand dollars. And then lastly on here, like I'd mentioned before, is that student device replacement countywide for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a total of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Any questions there?
Yes, so you said the HCLC building, we lease it, and we're going to put a roof on it? So how does that, how does that work? How, we don't have any chance of ownership?
Oh, no, sorry. We own that building. We are currently leasing it out.
Oh, okay, I was like, oh.
Yes, sorry.
Sores in it.
Correct.
Sores is leasing it out.
Oh, okay, I understand. Sorry, just need to declare.
You're good, no, no.
I'm not a tennis person, but is that literally asphalt plain surface, or is there something goes on top of that like a track?
Yeah, no, it is an asphalt playing surface, and there's some options, but we had asked and talked to them about that, and what is currently there is an asphalt playing surface.
So there's nothing on top of that?
Correct, and they were good with doing that. But part of getting that done, they'll mill it down, they're going to put down a fabric to help kind of hold it together more or less where those cracks are, and then pave on top of that, and then they'll repaint it and everything.
I thought they wanted to go with the clay court.
There's lots of different kinds, but as I said, that one is asphalt, and they're happy with asphalt, so that's what we're going to put back.
Let's see, the clay court would be more expensive than the asphalt, more likely.
I guarantee it.
Very good. Thank you, Graham.
Thank you.
Ms. Allison. Welcome to the party. Child nutrition budget.
I just noticed a typo on the school nutrition fund sheet. Can you go down to the next sheet, Brooke? No, there should be one more. There we go. The child nutrition program, as you know, operates independently of other programs. We are an enterprise fund. Our revenues include cash for meals and supplemental sales items sold, USDA cash reimbursements, and USDA donated commodities. Our budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year shows an increase of two percent, not a decrease. I'll have to fix that. But our proposed budget, our expenses are five million, three hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars, and our revenues will need to include a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars from our fund balance to help us meet our expenses. Our labor and benefits are fifty-four percent of our expenses. Food and supplies are forty percent, and overhead costs make up six percent. Currently, USDA reimbursement rates for the National School Lunch Program are as follows. For our paid breakfast, we get thirty-eight cents, and for our free breakfast, we get two dollars and seventy-three cents. And for lunch, we get fifty cents for a paid meal and four dollars and thirty-five cents for a paid meal. And I know you're probably all thinking, how do we have paid meals? But with our CEP program, only a certain percentage of those meals are covered at the free rate currently, based on our percentage of free and reduced students that we have. Eighty percent of our meals are covered at the free rate, and the other twenty percent are only covered at the paid rate. So we do not get that free rate for every meal that we serve. We're only getting about eighty percent of those covered at that higher free rate. And that's where our supplemental sales have to come into play to kind of cover that difference between the two categories.
Ms. Francis, if we had higher participation, would we get a better reimbursement rate?
Yes, yes.
That's what I told a lot of parents, they asked me about it.
Yes.
I said, tell your kids to go get something.
Currently, we serve about forty percent of our students' breakfast, so we have a lot of room for growth in that breakfast category. That is high. Last year, we were probably about thirty-two percent, so we have seen some growth, but not the amount we'd love to see. At lunch, we're feeding about eighty percent of our students, and last year was about sixty-eight percent. So we've seen an increase in both categories, but there is a lot of room for growth at breakfast. And we've tried some alternative models to offer second chance breakfast at the high schools to try to pick up the kids that might not be hungry when they come in at seven-thirty. Maybe after first period, they'd like to grab something. Grabbing go-carts for kids that are coming in the building late that they can grab and take to class if they don't have time to go sit down in the cafeteria. Just trying to encourage those kids to eat breakfast. A lot of them just have the opportunity to eat at home, and mom wants to feed them at home, you know? So it's a battle for us to try to get those breakfast numbers up.
I don't know about y'all, but when I go to the grocery store, it's like leaving a whole paycheck there, but I know that the statistics are showing right now twenty-one percent increase in food cost recently.
Yes, it's been...
And you're getting a free meal at school?
Why not take advantage of that?
Please.
Is it only, is there a hot meal option for breakfast?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
As well as like cereal?
We probably have four or five entree options offered every day, probably more at the high school. We usually have three or four different types of biscuits, some individually wrapped warm items, some pop tarts, some cereal, fresh fruit, you know, milk. There's lots of options for kids to choose from, and it's not just cold food. It's, we do have hot food every day, even at the elementary schools as well. So yeah, just trying to promote that. This week is actually National School Breakfast Week, and we've been doing a lot of fun activities with the kids. The theme was Surf's Up for School Breakfast, so you might see some posts on Facebook later this week. We sent some pictures in to be posted. They're dressed up in their Hawaiian shirts and leis and have decorations all over, trying to get the, and doing fun entrees, trying to get the kids to come in and participate. So we always hope for an increase from that, and then once those new kids do come in, we hope they'll stick around. But we definitely have a lot of room for growth at breakfast.
Very good.
For next year, April first, we'll be able to pull our numbers for CEP for the following school year. When we locked in last year, that's good for four years unless we're able to lock in for a higher rate in the following year. So we won't be penalized if that number drops, but if it does go up, we can always reissue that for another four additional years. And I pulled some preliminary reports last month just to kind of gauge it and take a look at it, and I think we're going to be able to redo for another four at a higher rate. Not a great difference, but, you know, any difference is, anything's, anything higher is better, so.
It is.
And I just got to brag on Allison. You know, you've really got to be paying attention. Yes, she's got free meals for everybody, but not everybody's getting those. And yes, we have to be eligible, but she's paid attention and made sure she knew the right things to provide.
Yeah.
So that our kids could get a free meal, and so kudos to her for paying attention, doing the hard work, and going the extra mile so that every kid we have can eat free. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good, thank you.
The increases that you'll notice on the budget, most of those are related to increase in the three percent payroll increase and the increase in benefits as well, and an increase in food cost, in addition to the increase that everybody's seeing about in the twenty percent range, we're having to buy more food since we're feeding more kids. So that food cost has increased for us.
Any questions for Ms. Francis? Thank you very much. I'll echo what Dr. Putnam said. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we're going to go back to the calendar with Ms. Barker.
I'm filling in for Jenny, and she will ask for your approval for these calendar changes on Monday night. So I'm going to try to talk you through this and talk about our current calendar, if that's okay.
Sure.
So what we would ask for on Monday night would be your approval to waive two days in our calendar. We missed January ninth, was an optional teacher workday, and we also missed January nineteenth, which was an annual leave day. So if you waive those two student days, then our last student day will be back to the original calendar of May thirty-first. So with, if we don't miss any more weather days, you know, remember, we're not days, we're instructional hours now. So if we don't miss any more days, we will have, if you waive those two days, we will finish the year with a thousand and sixty instructional hours. Okay, so we're still in good shape there. And this also does not change the employee contract of two hundred and fifteen days. So the last employee day will remain June tenth.
What were the, what were those hours again? One thousand what?
One thousand and sixty.
What's the minimum?
Gosh.
One twenty thousand?
One thousand twenty-five, I think that is right. One thousand...
So we're already...
Yes, we're over. And our, our spring semester is longer than our fall semester due to when we can start school, and we try to, we try to do our exams before Christmas, so we've got a little wibble room in the spring. And I think, you know, if you approve those, and we, you know, we've got those graduation tentative dates, and so I guess we'll wait till they approve those to present those to you, or do we want to do that all on Monday night? I'm not sure about that, but I do have the, you know...
I'm fine with going ahead, and if we have to do some more additional days as a board, I don't know that that'd be a problem.
The deal is we...
Keep those days solid, as long as we get the instructional hours in.
Yeah, and we get five, you know, we put five instructional days in the calendar, okay? We have an additional five days we can use. And because of the waiver, if we got into a situation, we could request five more days. So we've actually got ten days out there, remote days that we haven't used yet, if there were to be a blizzard or something in April, which is probably not going to happen. I don't know that.
Those to get out earlier than the thirty-first?
What I, what I was going to add is, you know, with remote days, number one, five is the minimum required by law to be built into the calendar. Now, you can have five more. Obviously, remote days are not optimal for instruction, nor do we want to get in a habit of using them a great deal, okay? However, if you were to approve to waive those days and return us back to May thirty-first, the last, being the last student day, we could set our graduation dates. You'd just have to know that, let's say we, we got a heavy snow that put us out for a week, we'd, we'd have to use some remote days during that time so that we could honor that graduation date. Does that make sense?
Perfect.
Actually, it's on the board, it's on the agenda for Monday night, the proposed date. Charlie's going to do that, sorry. Yeah, she, she is on there after you approve. Yes, okay.
I'm going to ask a really stupid question, but I know people that watch this are going to ask, why do we go those extra thirty-five hours above the minimum required?
It's working. Is it working?
Yeah.
All right, very good. We want to optimize instruction as much as possible. We want as many instructional hours as we can get, and that should coincide with the workdays that teachers are assigned. You know, there's two hundred and fifteen contracted days for teachers. So somewhere in the middle is a good, good mesh. So we have teachers available, we want them to have their number of contracted hours, and then we've got students available to us, so we want to get them as much instruction as we can. We just, we just feel like in this instance, you know, if we can, can set the graduation date and, and move forward so our families can plan for the celebrations that ensue, we certainly want to do that.
Jim, you're on the calendar committee, right?
Right.
I've heard one complaint, the only complaint actually I've heard about the calendar is, is fall break. Is that something you guys could work on possibly getting some days back for fall break?
That was highly debated this last committee.
Okay.
On, you know, so that's something every year, depending on who's on the committee, you know, sometimes they want a fall break, and then sometimes they don't want a fall break. And this year, because of the way, the last couple of years, what's happened is the state requires us to, you, you have to start school the Monday closest to August the nineteenth.
Yes.
And the way the calendar worked this last couple of years, it pushed us to that furthest week, so it gave us a shorter period of time between when we started and when Christmas break was. And so we decided several years ago that we wanted to try to get that first semester out of the way prior to Christmas. So that really shortens that first semester. So hopefully, you know, with the calendars changing, you know, next year or so, it's going to allow us to go to that week prior.
Right.
So it'll give us some extra days there, so that should give us some time to put a fall break back in.
Well, spring break's never...
Very well done.
Christmas is...
Yeah.
But the fall break is the one thing I hear, if that could be looked at.
And the reason of the last, like I said, the last two years is because we had to go to that week after.
Got you.
It really shortened that instructional time, so we were really struggling to get those hours in, in that first semester.
So when can we be, when can we be like the other twenty-three counties in the state that start a week earlier?
When we decide to break calendar law.
I say we do it.
Was there any penalty for those?
Not yet. It certainly cannot be anything I recommend, because...
You can't ask for variance.
I cannot, I cannot. My superintendent's license would be revoked. And so I, I just can't in good conscience recommend that. I would caution or warn you that y'all could be civilly liable. And, you know, one thing I would offer, as frustrating as it is, we have to think about the, the model that we're setting for kids, obey the rules, obey the laws. And then are we going to turn and do that very thing? So all I'm telling you is, if y'all want to do it, it's going to be something that comes from amongst y'all. I can't recommend it.
My question was, you just, you can't ask for an exception and get it approved, right? Okay.
It's really down to one person in Raleigh.
I have, you know, I have participated in some... I have, you know, I have participated in some state level meetings and we, the, the running joke, I guess, in the legislature, I don't know, I don't work there, is if you want a bill to die, you send it to rules and it'll just disappear. And there have been multiple calendar flexibility bills sent. There have been multiple petitions sent. There have been many, many requests made in the way of calendar flexibility and they send it to rules.
Well, the School Board Association's done the same thing. They've advocated for it since I've been on the board, since 2000. I think it'd be better, you might be lucky to get it done maybe on a local bill. That's something we might think about talking to Representative Pless and Corbin about, but it may again be pushed to rules and die.
I'm glad I don't know how all that works down there. That's just what I've been told.
It hurts our teachers because of PD, professional development. You need to have that in the beginning of the year. You need to have that early in the year. And so, you know, then that pushes us, we're having to get subs during the day and try to do it during the day. And, you know, it's just, in the spring, it's not as timely as it is in the fall. We could build in those days, but we can't do that right now because we don't have the time. That's what I see from the instructional end of it.
I just.
So that makes it tough.
Still get the waiver. You know, they could take that away. If they wanted to play hard with us, they could take the waiver away. Bad weather waiver.
Let's go ahead and plan to waive those days and give our parents the graduation dates.
Do that Monday night when we.
At least we can do that.
On that, does waiving those days hurt us in the waiver that we're getting from the state? Because, you know, you have to miss eight days on a average of the last five years in order to get that waiver. So by waiving the days we've missed, does that come into play and hurt us?
No, and I, I'll, I'll have Jenny, I want to hear it out of her mouth because she manages that and does a great job with it. But her and I talked and the last remote day we had, I believe, was the eighth day and so we're, we're good.
We're good.
We, we meet the, we meet the waiver.
If anything changes in your information that you've given us tonight, let us know.
Yes, yes, yes.
I think it's a no-brainer to do that, but anyway, thank you. Thank you.
I've got one more thing.
All right.
Real quick, I just wanted to bring up policy 5030, community use of facilities. And so really this is just kind of informational and it's also, I guess in a sense, a blessing. If, if you all will, you know, say, go for it, then I would like to talk to policy committee about making a slight tweak to this. So over the last six to eight months, because all the facility use comes to, to my office and I and Michelle Swanger process it, and we've been having people that have, have always used our facilities, but in the last, like I said, six to eight months or so, we've had an increasing number that have been having an issue getting an insurance company to give them the requirement. So with ours, if somebody uses our facilities, they have to have a million dollar liability insurance and also a $5,000 medical payment endorsement. And they have been having a hard time getting insurance companies to provide them that $5,000 medical payment endorsement. I looked at other districts around, we're the only one out of every district that surrounds us that requires that $5,000 medical payment endorsement. I spoke with Pat and I'll let him kind of jump in here in a second and kind of explain everything just about exactly what that is, how it works and, you know, that, if we really need it or not. And just in speaking with Pat, liability wise for us, we really don't. It's really kind of a help to somebody who could potentially get hurt at one of our facilities. But you want to jump in, Pat?
I need to get you a microphone, please. Thank you.
You can have both.
I got both sides of my mouth.
What he's talking about is the med pay policy. It is not a liability policy. Med pay policies are that if you get hurt, they're going to pay your medical bills regardless, okay? So for example, if, if a group is on, on our campus and we're not paying it, the organization is paying, but they just, they break a leg and they have to go to the hospital or whatever, they can apply under this policy that the group has for med pay and they're going to get paid whether anything really happened or not. It's like a car policy. If you're in a car wreck, you get med pay, whether there's liability or not on your side. So it's, it's, it's really a service that we're requiring organizations provide to people because if someone breaks their leg to, otherwise, they'd have to say that either we or the organization did something liable and we didn't warn them about the hole or we didn't make, make it a safe place to be. So it is, it is, it is a, it is a, it is, we're requiring the organizations to do a service for people who just get hurt there on the front. So it's doesn't really, it doesn't really affect us as far as liability. It doesn't protect us any more than anything else, so we didn't do anything wrong. It just, it's just a service we're requiring these organizations to have for it. So. And I understand what Graham is saying. A lot of insurance companies don't do that because there's no, you pay it whether anything, you did anything wrong or not. If you just get hurt on, on the premises, you're going to have to pay med pay. So I understand why the insurance companies are not wanting to, to do that because it's.
Yeah, so at the end of the day, I mean, I'm, I'm fine either way. We do have a lot of community organizations and people that use our facilities very regularly and it's becoming more and more of a burden and a hassle for them. And so to try and help them out, you know, if, if you all are okay with it, I wanted to take this to policy committee and just kind of kick it around with them and see if they recommend taking that $5,000 medical endorsement off and just putting us at the million like all the other counties and districts around us.
It's not exposing us to any more liability than what we already have.
More or less just forcing somebody that's using our facility to have additional coverage that's not really necessary.
Correct.
And it is owned by the public. If we can make it easier for the public to use our buildings, then that's what we need to do in my opinion.
Correct.
Would run it, is everybody okay just running it back?
It's a million dollars standard for everybody that's around.
That's correct, yes.
I've had that and others, some other questions about that. Some other school districts don't even charge safety use agreement for some other districts for like their facilities and trying to get maybe some more detail about that. And that's something else I was going to mention to Graham about for the policy to look at.
There is a cost involved in it.
There is a cost involved and.
I know Boncombe's rate's much higher than ours. We experienced that during the flooding.
Per Jackson may not charge for some, I don't, you can't distinguish some can, some can't. Take like, take the example, Bethel Youth League, they rent a lot of facilities.
Right, and, and we've got it set up. I mean, you can find all that stuff online. And I believe a few years back, Building and Grounds were the board, probably Building and Grounds and then the board voted on it to set those fees. But there, they are kind of, they step and so like our schools can use the facilities at no charge. Our youth teams are very minimum. I mean, it's a dollar or two an hour. Then there's nonprofits that are, cost a little bit more, but still not a lot. And then there's for-profit that it's still minimal, but that's the highest end of having to pay for our facilities. But it's all within general statute and state law that we can charge within those and set those rates.
And I think that's, that is fair, but like you say, this insurance policy deal has become a burden for a lot of, lot of organizations. It kind of pushes them away and.
It, it's just been more difficult.
Like Chairman Francis said, this is public property and it came with our taxpayer money, so our taxpayers should be able to use it.
But there is a cost involved and somebody being there to open it up and close it, et cetera, et cetera. We went through this very great detail many years ago. I remember it well.
Tracy, when back when Tracy was here, I mean, we, we like what the kilowatt hours were.
Oh, yeah.
It was painful. And it's a good policy though. We got a real good policy out of it and I think that that tweak to it, like you're talking about, run it back through and I don't think you have a problem getting that approved.
Great. Well, there'll be nothing Monday night, but at our next policy committee, which is the 20th of this month, I believe, we'll bring it up and then we'll, we'll have it to you for first read after that, as long as policy committee's on board with it.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Do you have anything else?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Do we need to go into closed session at all or do we have anything?
No, Mr. Smathers has got one for Monday night, right?
Yes.
Yes, he does.
He does.
Not tonight.
Well, there being nothing else, then we'll just consider this meeting adjourned.